We will. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Everybody will please stand. Commissioner Totacini give us a prayer.
I'm going to start in Navajo. We pray for our teams that are at the state tournament. We pray that they travel home safely after their outcome. We also, this is our Women's History Month. There are mothers out there and grandmothers, some of them have made courageous changes in the lives of people, some are trailblazers. So bless each and every woman this month because it is when we remember them for all the things that they've done. And last of all, bless the workers that protect and keep our county residents safe. With these, we offer them assistance for prayers to our Creator. Amen.
Commissioner.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, just one change. Chief Vega is going to be presenting the last item today. Mr. Sawyer will be here if needed.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Stand for motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. All right, consent agenda. Consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes from February 21st of 2023. Consideration of approval of FY23 budget adjustment number 11. Resolution number 222353. Consideration for renewal of proposal number 212213 on call building automated system and facility HVAC service to Farmington Heating and Metal of Farmington, New Mexico. Four, consideration of renewal of proposal number 202108. Property and casualty insurance to Kaiser Millennial Leavitt and Insurance of Farmington, New Mexico. Number five, consideration of approval of first amended intergovernmental agency between the New Mexico Economic Development Department and San Juan County for natural gas line extension to San Juan Industrial Park. And number six, consideration of adoption of statement to the San Juan County policy and notice of nondiscrimination. All right.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. All right, new business. Number one, consideration of approval of Public Service Company of New Mexico, PNM, San Juan Generation Generating Station demolition and re-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner-
Remediation.
Portsmouth Project Manager, today I present for your consideration of approval Public Service Company of New Mexico's San Juan Generating Station demolition and remediation plan in accordance with San Juan County Ordinance number 121. In attendance at today's meeting from PNM is San Juan Generating Station Director and Plant Manager Rodney Warner. Attending virtually, we have PNM's demolition and remediation engineering contractor representative from Burns and McDonnell, Jeff Pope, and San Juan County's engineering contractor representative from Mountain West Consulting, Andrew Shafe. As you know, San Juan Generating Station is a coal-fired powered generation facility that prior to shutdown was operated by PNM and had been in operation since 1973. In 2019, the state of New Mexico passed the Energy Transition Act allowing an early pathway for the closure of San Juan Generating Station. In September 2022, San Juan Generating Station produced its last megawatt of electricity. In 2021, San Juan County adopted ordinance number 121 to require owners and operators of generating facilities to plan for and fully fund demolition and remediation of affected properties of retired generating facilities upon complete and permanent closure. Ordinance 121 requires that demolitions shall comply with all state, federal, local, and tribal laws and regulations. State and federal entities with regulation over past, current, and future facility activities will continue to manage and oversee those responsibilities throughout demolition and beyond. Ordinance 121 does not place or shift any environmental regulatory responsibility on San Juan County. Ordinance 121 allowed the county to hire a qualified engineer to aid in the evaluation and oversight of the ongoing progress of PNM's demolition and remediation plan. As a result, San Juan County is contracted with Mountain West Consulting LLC. Mountain West Consulting consists of a team of experts with extensive power and industrial plant decommissioning experience and has been contracted in several projects by other entities in the Four Corners area. On January 24th, 2023, PNM hosted San Juan County for an in-person onsite presentation and review of their demolition and remediation plan. County Manager Mike Stark, Deputy County Manager Jim Cox, Andrew Shafe of Mountain West Consulting, and myself represented San Juan County at the event. At the conclusion of the event, PNM also hosted a site tour that was attended by Mr. Shafe and myself. Ordinance 121 requires that the owner of the facility to submit a demolition and remediation plan no later than three months after the facility is retired. The county then has 60 days to provide an initial written completeness notice that identifies any planned deficiencies. Both of these requirements have been met. On December 28th, 2022, PNM submitted to San Juan County a demolition and remediation plan for the San Juan Generating Station. After thorough and careful review of PNM's plan, San Juan County provided an initial written completeness notice identifying no deficiencies on February 21st, 2022. Staff recommends approval of PNM's San Juan Generating Station demolition and remediation plan dated 12/20/2022 and signing of the formal approval letter that is attached to the staff summary. I now stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner. My only question, of course, I go straight to water, by the way. Is there going to be any issues with the water in the holding ponds that are out there now? Because it won't be reclaimed for another, what, two or three years? Is that the way I understood it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I believe the plan is for now, they'll start the demolition of the main structure of the plant and bring it down to the ground. The ponds that are there will remain until well after demolition is complete, and they will maintain drainage to those ponds to continue to capture any material that we don't want contaminating runoff areas or groundwater or things of that nature.
And Mr. Chairman, we do have the consulting engineer for PNM available. I don't know if Mr. Pope wanted to provide any additional comments. Can we hear him okay, Devin?
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, yes, yeah.
The process ponds will, most of them will be closed. A couple of them will be left open for the groundwater treatment system out there, but most of them will be closed at some time in and around the completion of the demolition of the facility as well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just had a question, Commissioner. What's the timeline for this?
The project, the demolition of the main structure, I believe, is supposed to be around two years to get the main structure down and leveled to grade. And then I believe the overall timeline to the closure of these ponds and the drainage that we're talking about is four years from start of demolition till the end.
All right.
Does the plan take into account any projected or possible future generation out there? I know there was talk about gas-powered generation. Does this plan take into account that?
So they will be leaving the substation structure, and it will allow access points to the main power grid. I believe that there are some talks of possibly solar generation projects tying in to that substation to be able to get into the grid.
Is that the map that has the pink protected areas? Or what is that? I was a little confused as to the map that has the pink protected areas. It has the ponds, the switch station, the switching stations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said I think it'd be best to defer to Mr. Pope or Mr. Warner on any of those specifics.
Yeah, the pink areas are protected. The switch yards are-
Sorry, you kind of cut out there a little. Can you repeat that?
I was going to say that the pink areas on the map show that those are areas that are going to be protected. The switch yards are going to be protected that are shown in pink. You have process ponds, again, a couple of them are going to stay for the groundwater. The rest of it will just be brought at the facility after the structure-
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I believe there was also a question about reuse. Mr. Smith was referring to the switching station, that some of the projects adjacent would be looking to tie into, for example, the Desiree Solar Project would do so. I believe in terms of onsite projects, at this point, there are no plans. I would defer to Mr. Warner if he wanted to speak to that. But that's my understanding, that's what they presented to us in the plan, that they would present this site back to grade and then have the potential of future projects. But right, at this point, they do not have anything planned.
Because the PRC shut that down a year or so ago?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beck said, as I do understand from those talks about replacement power, there was a proposal from Public Service Company of New Mexico to have some solar projects along with backup natural gas generation onsite at San Juan Generating Station, but the Public Regulation Commission did decide to move forward with three solar projects and no natural gas backup generation. Anybody else?
Questions? During the waste removal, I guess they'll be transporting it to landfills or places, and they're going to make sure that that's protected and safe?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, yes, that is correct. They will be, they'll be under heavy regulation when they dispose of all the waste from the plant. And as I mentioned, their state and federal entities will still be heavily involved with the regulation of all the waste that comes out of that site.
Thank you.
Do you know if all four, Mr. Warner, this may be a question for you. Are all four towers, will they be demolished at the same time? Just hope.
So the question is, is the cooling towers?
Yes.
Yeah, they will be demolished. That is in the plan and all. There is, there are two cooling towers standing right now, and Unit 3 and Unit 4, and both of those cooling towers will be demolished in this.
Will they do it at the same time, or?
No, they'll be phased. Are you talking about the stacks?
Really, any of it, any of it is going to be.
So there's a, there's a, the stacks are kind of, everyone is interested in watching those.
Yeah, I wanted to sell tickets.
So there-
I think we should space it out.
There will be, there will be plenty of public notice for the stacks to come down and to witness that.
We'll let the Sheriff's Department know for traffic.
Mr. Chair, I had-
Thank you very much.
One more question. How large is the workforce during this?
So that's a good question. There's not a whole lot of workforce. In fact, I could ask Jeff to explain that because, you know, I've worked in the industry for 40 years, building and running. This is the first time I've done decommissioning. But Jeff, what would you say are, we're out bidding this right now, and so we've projected that staff, what it will be, but it's just our projections. And Jeff, could you give the commission a projection on the staff?
Sure. It's a very equipment of operation, so more labor upfront when they're starting to evacuate the waste before they can do the demolition. Have 50, 60, essentially, work at the site. That gets complete, prop cleaning. 30 to 40 people. Again, equipment, chopping pieces up and stuff. It takes, so probably 50 to 75 people.
So I, so if you didn't catch all of that, the initial phases will, we've got to remove asbestos, we've got to take care of mercury, those type of things. It's the control that, and that will be workforce of about 50 people initially. Skills in those craft areas, specifically how to remove asbestos, how to remove mercury from switches and that type of work. And so, and then it's operators. The challenge we have with operators is it's not just any operator. They have to have the skill set of using the equipment that these demolition contractors will bring in. They're large industrial shares and all. So there are a level of labors which we anticipate will be the local crafts. We are bidding it out. There's both union and non-union contractors that are bidding this work. We haven't stipulated that you have to use union workforce, but then we're in the process of evaluating. And then the pond closures are more traditional type operators running compactors and the excavator machines.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, this is just a comment. I'm an advocate of recycling, and I like the way that some stuff will be recycled onsite and some will be offsite. So I like that.
Yeah, we, there is, in the plan, it even lists it, so the participants and the owners, that we want to definitely minimize the amount of scrap that we take to the San Juan County landfill. They've already requested that, we're communicating with them. And then the hazardous material will only go to designated and approved PNM sites. It's not the contractor's decision where that material goes. We are the creator of the hazards, and so we want to know where all of that. So the asbestos, the other controlled substances, we will know where those go and disposed of in an approved site.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, because we've had a couple of questions that have been posed to us relative to House Bill 142 and its compatibility with our ordinance. And I thought I would just share with you all that I've spoken to Representative Allison, who introduced that bill. It's the Generating Facility and Mine Remediation and Restoration for Public Health and the Environment Act specific to the closure of San Juan Generating Station. And essentially, what that bill does is provide some additional funding, $350,000 to the Energy Minerals Natural Resources Division of the state of New Mexico, as well as $350,000 to the Mexico Environment Department to provide some additional funding and to ensure that the project and the site is inspected, investigated, determine if any environmental contamination, land and waterways have been polluted, and to make sure that they're properly cleaned up and remediated. So he's aware that we had our ordinance in place, and it specifically is designed to make certain that the plant was decommissioned, that there wasn't a permanent eyesore left on the landscape, and that all of the regulatory agencies that have oversight today will have that oversight and closure of the plant and make sure that it's properly decommissioned and remediated. And so he agrees that what is being done here tonight, any actions you take are compatible with his bill if that bill's successful in making it through the legislature. So I just wanted to provide that update because there has been some confusion related to what our ordinance requires versus the bill and if those two are compatible or not. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve PNM's demolition and remediation plan.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. All right. Mr. Stark on FY24 congressionally directed spending requests.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We were released, recently notified by our federal delegation, so that's Senator Heinrich, Senator Lujan, and Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez, that they will be accepting appropriation requests for fiscal year 2024. So this is a continuation of what's been made available to us the previous two years. The funding applications are due here pretty quick. March 10th for Senator Heinrich, March 16th for Senator Lujan, and still working on a deadline for Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez. As you might recall, we've been successful, two years ago, we received 1.25 million for some right-of-way work associated with the Pinion Hills project. Last year, we submitted on safety city improvements, and unfortunately, we weren't able to find a way by which that project would qualify within the various designated funding that's made available to the congressional delegation. So we've been working really closely with our local field reps, Mr. Dumont from Senator Heinrich's office, Mr. Lee from Senator Lujan's office, and just to make sure that we can put together requests that kind of meet the available funding sources they have, as well as the amounts that kind of fit. You know, you need to be fairly reasonable with your requests. And then also, there seems to be a definite desire to see public safety requests come before them this year. So met internally with staff to put together some projects for your consideration, and we were able to develop three that we felt would meet the requirements of the funding that's available. And I'm going to ask Chief Vega, as well as the undersheriff, to come up and provide some specifics on these projects. But the first one is a new multi-agency mobile command unit that would be utilized by both the sheriff's office and fire department, at an estimated cost of 1.2 million. That would replace the mobile command units, a 17-year-old unit that exists today, and would really enhance and upgrade our ability to respond to events and incidences throughout the county, providing all the latest and greatest technology that's needed in those types of units. You might recall, last meeting, we submitted a grant, AFG grant, for 100 self-contained breathing apparatus to replace those units for our fire department. We're still short 100 that we need to replace. And so this funding is perfect for being able to take care of that other 100 gap need that we have. That would be at an estimated cost of 1.1 million. And then last but not least, we have a use of force simulator that currently is in existence today at the Lee Acre Substation that's used by law enforcement, specifically the sheriff's office to train on. And we have a need to replace that unit and bring in some newer technology, estimated costs of $100,000. So with your approval, I'd like to turn over some time and just have these gentlemen go through these requests with you and provide some specifics about the need for, purpose in need of each of these requests that we have before you. So. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. As Mr. Stark mentioned, a couple of weeks ago, I came in front of you to seek your support and approval in putting in for the assistance to firefighter grant. As I mentioned then, you know, we need to replace 200 self-contained breathing apparatus. Today's prices, that's roughly a $2 million venture. That price is likely, or will, in fact, go up in the next month. The AFG covers half of that. This project would cover the other 100 or so packs that we would need to replace. Without this, it's going to be hard for us to go out and find the funding to replace that. So we fully support that initiative. As far as the mobile command post goes, again, that's another project the fire department supports. Right now, when we get large wildland fires or hazmat incidents, you know, we really run those scenes out of the front seats of our trucks. So, you know, putting three people in there, a tactical dispatcher in the front seat of a truck, even a crew cab pickup, that gets really, really tight, especially when there're, you know, multiple radios going. So again, having a mobile command post where we can spread out, have our mobile data terminals in there, cameras, remote cameras, air monitoring, that's a big game changer for us, and we just don't have that ability right now. So any questions for me?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yeah, the mobile command unit that we have is an older unit, 17 or 18 years old, and really, at that time, they were kind of new to the industry. We have more of a camping model. There's no beds or tables, but it's, it wasn't designed for what they're, the way that they're made now. So we've made it work, and we've used local providers to do some wiring and whatnot. But it's fit our needs, but it's pretty limited. But these guys are really in need of it, so it's a great joint project to get us off the ground and up and running. As far as the use of force simulator, I'll let, ironically, Sergeant Adam Rogers brought this to our attention just a few weeks ago. Ours is outdated and very limited in its abilities, and he's found this new product, so I'll let him speak on it briefly.
Thank you. So the proposed simulator is more than just a use of force simulator, it's a scenario simulator. Our current simulator in use at the LA Sub has been an excellent tool. We've used it to great effect to identify deficiencies in deputies and effectively train those out of them, but it has its limits. It's still a screen. They are still essentially talking to a projected image on a screen, and the reaction times are quite slow. The trainer of the, running the simulation has to click options, there's lag time. The simulated weapons in use are beginning to wear out. The simulator I proposed is a virtual reality simulator, meaning the trainee is wearing a mask and noise-canceling headphones, and the instructor running the simulator is actually communicating with them over the headset. So rather than yelling at a screen for 10 minutes and trying to draw some training value out of it, they're communicating with a thinking, breathing individual who has experience with the training material. And so instead of it just being a use of force every time, what's the proper way to use force, we're going to find deputies with this simulator are able to talk their way out of it, which ultimately is a better outcome, if they can communicate effectively. There will still be a use of force component to the training that is unfortunately still very necessary. But the technology involved with the Apex Officer System we're proposing is much more immersive, much more accurate, much more effective. And as I said, rather than yelling at a screen and choosing a force option, they're actually communicating with somebody with a brain. And that's going to increase the effectiveness of our training exponentially. Also, as an added benefit, this system is portable, so it can be taken to wherever we're needing to take it, rather than having to shuttle people over to the Lee Acre Substation. There are any additional questions, I'll answer as best I can, but that's the long and short of it.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Everybody wants to ask it.
Call man.
Hey, get ready, you're up.
Oh, boy.
Yes, sir.
I had experience with both the command module and the simulator, and they're both very good tools, much needed.
I was just going to ask if you were going to have a padded room for the VR, because I've seen videos on the internet where people run into walls, more of a joke than anything.
But it's a valid question, though, actually. So the simulated, the simulator comes with four pillars, and so those are set up, they can be as much as 30 feet apart, and the trainee has freedom to move within the boundaries- trainee has freedom to move within the boundaries of those four pillows. Well, in their VR goggles, when they come to the boundary, there will be a virtual fence. It's intertwining blue mesh essentially. They'll know when they've reached the edges of the environment. There's also a safety officer in the room with them, making sure they do not run headfirst into the walls and things of that nature. So.
How many can train at one time? Is it just one?
There can be two trainees at the same time, and then the instructor, of course, would play the role of the suspect through their headset.
And how did the scenarios change?
They're custom-built by the instructor. They pick an environment. Each environment has approximately 20 starting locations. So we're starting with, I believe, over 100 environments, each of those environments having 20 locations to start from. They choose the subject and the amount of, the number of other people that are milling around, your bystanders, if you will. They choose whether or not this suspect is armed, what they're armed with, not armed at all, in a mental health crisis, inebriated. It can also simulate traffic stops, can simulate a variety of anti-terrorism scenarios, active shooter scenarios. Sky's the limit. The scenario, the environment, and the subjects in the, in the simulation are custom-built by the instructor. Essentially, no two scenarios would be identical.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. And this is where I want to get a commitment that we can come do a tour at some point whenever this is in place.
We would be happy to have you guys. Absolutely.
I don't know, because the VR I've been on, I play golf, and I come out there sweating like it's the championship game, for sure. It is so realistic, and I can see how people fall. I have not fallen. But I, I can see where it'd be an awesome tool. It's, it's just so realistic. It's incredible.
We can incorporate stress as needed.
When Commissioner, when Commissioner Beckstead gets there, I, I want to be there that day. Please.
Certainly.
Any, any other questions?
Yes, sir. Well, just a comment. I know if anybody thinks they want to be in law enforcement, I don't know if we could run them through that to see if they got what it takes. Or sometimes people try to second guess you and say, you should have done this. And they run them through that program, and they see you don't hardly have any time to react sometimes, you know?
Actually, very glad you said that because the portable nature of the system allows us to take it on recruiting trips to events like that. We can incorporate it into the hiring process to gauge an applicant's mentality, how well they respond to stress, is their temper too short for us.
Right. Training.
Also highly useful as an evaluation tool for new applicants.
Yeah, evaluation, exactly. So you get a whole new appreciation for law enforcement when somebody goes through that and they, you know, they can take weeks or months to second guess you when you only have, you know, a fraction of a second sometimes. So, well done.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, if you were to find these projects to be acceptable to you and, and for us to submit these to the delegation, I, I would request two things. One, at least in previous requests, there's been a 10% match requirement. There's the potential it could be more, but we would find that to be, A, we, funding available to, 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 to meet that match if, if we are successful. Whether it's at the 10% or even a higher amount, we'd find that good money to invest in to be able to, to bring these resources to, to San Juan County. Secondly, working with our congressional delegation, the field reps specifically, there may be an opportunity if we certainly could submit all three projects to each, each, our two senators and the Congresswoman. But there may be a priority system that could be in place for some of the delegation that we may want to submit just one project to one and, 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 and three to the others. I just wanted to have the ability to, to, to work with our delegation reps to, to, to find the best way for us to maximize this funding. And if they had suggestions relative to how we should submit, we'd like to be able to, to, to get your approval to do, do so.
Separate it out?
Potentially, if, if need be. The, the desire, if, if they were to suggest, Mr. Chair, that we submit all three to each, we would certainly do that. But if there's a way by which we would assure funding, if only one project was submitted, for example, we want to have the ability to, to have some latitude to do that. Of course, you know, time, timeframe's pretty tight here.
The county is going to be made on this.
Mr. Chair, it'd be myself, and then with Mr. Cox and Mr. Smith, putting these applications together.
And the last thing, I just, I want to commend you with the fire department and the sheriff's office working together like that. I think that's an awesome, awesome thing for you two to get along and, and be able to share that stuff. And because I, I know, I've watched some of the basketball games between the police department and the fire departments, and they, they get a little aggressive sometimes. So, no, we appreciate you guys working together.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the county manager to make decisions regarding the submission of these grants, the applications, with the leeway to, to make those decisions. And then obviously to come back and have it ratified after he does that, considering the, the short application time or deadlines that we're looking at.
I'd second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Consideration of notice of intent to amend and restate San Juan County Fire Ordinance.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I come before you today to seek your consideration to amend and restate San Juan County Ordinance 6, also known as the Fire Code of San Juan County. On November 1st, 2022, the New Mexico State Fire Marshal adopted the 2021 International Fire Code. New Mexico Administrative Code 10 dot 25 dot 5 dot 1 requires local jurisdictions to also follow suit in that adoption. This rule establishes the state's minimum requirements that apply to structure, processes, premises, and safeguards regarding the hazard of fire and explosion arising from storage, handling, or use of structures, materials, or devices, conditions hazardous to life, property, or public welfare, and the occupancy of structures or premises, fire hazards in the structure or on the premises from occupancy or operation, matters related to the construction, extension, repair, alteration or removal of fire protection systems, and conditions affecting the safety of firefighters and emergency responders, responders during emergency operations. This rule does not apply to one and two family dwellings and townhomes not more than three stories above grade, plan and height, with a separate means of ingress and their accessory structures not more than three stories above grade in height built to the New Mexico Building Code, except for those being used as commercial properties. Just a couple notable changes in the 21 code. Mobile food preparation vehicles are now addressed in the 2021 code. That was not in the 15 code. And that's in relation to cooking that produces grease-laden vapors requiring a hood system. We don't have a whole lot of food vendors in the county. When Bloomfield, City of Bloomfield adopts this, there's some food vendors in the city. And then the other one, as it relates to Desiree, we were talking about early, there is a whole chapter that's, talks about energy storage systems that are addressed in the 2021 code. Deputy Chief Mack has already had a couple positive discussions with the developers of the solar farm regarding some of the code changes there. If approved, this ordinance would take effect and be enforced 30 days after its enactment and recording with the clerk. I also want to note that the Farmington Fire Department Fire Marshal is here in support tonight. Farmington plans on adopting the 21 code shortly. City of Bloomfield, their ordinance states that upon the adoption of the code at the state level, it is automatically adopted by the city. We're in talks with Aztec right now. So Aztec will probably be following suit with the adoption of the 21 code. So all jurisdictions in the, in San Juan County will be on the 21 code. The builders associations generally like that, whenever one's on the same code. I think that's all I have. I stand for any questions that you may have for me.
Mr. Chair, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, you don't have the same fire codes throughout the municipalities in the county. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fortner, there are different fire codes. I believe, and I apologize, Farmington's on the 2003 fire code right now. Bloomfield's on the 2015, Aztec's on the 2015, and we're currently on the 2015.
Okay. So how does that work? How does everybody kind of stay updated? Is it just a matter of policy usually?
The, the fire codes adopted, or there's a new fire code addition every three years. The state fire marshal decides whether they want to adopt it. So there was, there is a 2018 code that the state fire marshal decided not to adopt, and that's why we did not adopt the 2018 code. The state did choose to adopt the 21 code. So again, based on the New Mexico Administrative Code, we are required to follow suit.
Okay. And just one more question. So does this impact, there's still some things that are still new to me. Does this impact current buildings and their fire codes of having to update what's in their buildings? I mean, does it create a burden on other people?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fortner, that's a, that's a really good question. It'd be fair to say that existing buildings are, are grandfathered unless there's a change of occupancy type, at which time we may be forced, depending on what the code says, to go in and bring those buildings up to code. Predominantly, this is new buildings or businesses that are getting business license where this code would, would apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And what would be the ramifications if, if we didn't approve this?
Mr. Chairman, the, the state could probably come in and require us to adopt the 21 code. Honestly, I don't know what the ramifications would be. That, that would be something I'd have to explore with the state. There could potentially be some reduction in fire protection funds that we get from the state if we don't go to the 21 code. Outside of that, I would have to do some research what the ramifications would be.
I, I would just curious because I thought it might be swift.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sawyer, do we need to open this as a public hearing? Was it noticed for today or were we?
No, this is just to adopt the, the notice of intent to adopt, and then it'll be advertised in the Daily Times. And then, then we'll, then there will be a public hearing period.
So we're not voting on that today?
Not today.
To publish it.
Yeah, just publishing it.
Mr. Chair, I move to, for this consideration of notice of intent to amend and restate San Juan County's Fire Code Ordinance Number 6.
I'll second that.
All right. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Motion will carry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Our favorite part of the night, word from our county manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just want to update you on a couple of events and then a continuing event in Santa Fe that we want to update you on. But start off with here, lines with our strategic initiative of, of making us shine and keeping, you know, cleaning up the county, our house annual, I take that back, semi-annual household hazardous waste collection event. So this is the spring effort. I will be here in the county parking lot Saturday, March 25th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You all have that flyer in front of you. Mr. Neely's already started promoting that through our social media channels, and Mr. Mestes and his team will be here for that event. That specifically benefits, and I always want to make sure everybody's aware of this, it's Bloomfield, Kirtland, and the unincorporated part of San Juan County. That's because the City of Farmington and the City of Aztec have a contract with Waste Management by which you can call Waste Management to, to, to pick up your household hazardous waste. And so they don't, they choose not to participate in this event and, and, and split the costs accordingly. So just want to be, everybody to be aware of that and the why. Just a reminder. Then on April 15th, Dumpster Day, that's another semi-annual event that we provide. Free use of the transfer stations during normal, during regular hours. We'll be accepting, accepting normal loads on that day. So April 15th, 2023, that's Mr. Perrell and his team that make that event happen on a twice-a-year basis. And if you need more information, sjcounty.net relative to what's open on that day and, and the hours and, and what you can and can't bring, as we discussed last meeting. Last but not least, the event that continues for 11 more days in Santa Fe, that's our legislative session. It's a 60-day session and, you know, provided to you all an update just on where bills currently stand. There's, things are moving quickly now. There's going to be some long nights, long days, trying to move some legislation through, and things are morphing as we speak. Bills that, you know, we were tracking and had concerns about. I know New Mexico Counties as well. For Commissioner Fortner, she's serving as our rep. The tax pyramiding bill, for example, was a bill that was of concern to us because of the potential loss of gross receipts tax. House Bill 321, the liquor excise and motor vehicle excise tax bill. We had some concerns about potential loss of funding to our DWI program. Well, those bills didn't make it through, and, and a new bill was introduced. It's an omnibus tax bill that was introduced yesterday in House Tax, House Bill 547. And so we were able to, to work with Representative Duncan, who sits on that committee, to provide some feedback on, on that bill and at least have our voices heard. But that bill's moving quickly. It was heard on the House floor today.
What about the deadline for introduction of bills in the House?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, that's a great question. So it was. And what the, both sides of the aisle and the, and I shouldn't say both sides of the aisle, but the, the House and the Senate, rather, have what are called dummy bills that are listed as public health and safety and public health, safety, and welfare. And so those bills are hanging out there that can be utilized to attach legislation that stalled or needs a, just a new life or a rework and introduce them that way. So that's actually how that bill was introduced. It was hanging in there, hanging out there and, and attached and brought forth to House Tax yesterday. So that's a, that's a great question. You know, a couple other bills that, that are, that are of interest, not necessarily concerned, but capital outlay bill, as you all know, we submitted our projects for consideration by our legislators. That, that list of approved projects has not been put out yet, but will be soon. That's House Bill 505. Senate Bill 309, those are, are the reauthorizations of previous capital outlay projects. And we did have a couple, as we serve as the fiscal agent for San Juan Regional Medical Center. They had the Women's Inpatient Project, as you might recall, had a couple of grants that were provided in years past, had the project designed, put out to bid. Construction inflation, inflation hit that project pretty hard to the tune of $1 million. And so additional funding was being, is being procured, but also needed to have those grants extended so that we can put that project back out to bid on behalf of San Juan Regional Medical Center. So those reauthorizations are part of, of that bill. And then just a whole host of other, our bills I, that we're tracking and, and watching closely, that, that are going to probably move to the finish line. The end of the session is March 18th at, at noon. So we're just 11 days away, and we'll certainly be keeping a, a close eye on things. And if, and as I was previously have mentioned, if you have any areas of concern or, or things that have been brought forth to your attention, please reach out because we, we do have access to resources down there, and lots of folks that are traveling back and forth to Santa Fe right now. So I could stand for any questions you might have about that or, or anything else.
I have one comment. I'd like, I'd like everybody to look at HB 121. It's a House Bill with water rights and, and the fact that when you apply to transfer water rights, it goes to the state engineer. And it can take up to three and six years, three to six years, sometimes as many as eight years to approve that. And the way it sets right now is you can go ahead and use that water until it gets through the state engineer's office and gets approved. And HB 121 will take that out. So if there's any transfer of water rights, especially in an area like this, where we transfer water rights quite often to, to take care of our other municipalities and, and water users. And so that one is, is one that the San Juan Water Commission is opposing very aggressively. And I believe it goes to the House floor for the third reading tomorrow.
very aggressively, and I believe it goes to the House floor for the third reading tomorrow. I believe, I may be wrong, but that's one that I encourage everyone to look at, and please reach out to anybody that you can on that. I don't know if it's in your packet.
It doesn't look like it's in there.
It's, it's not in there, but.
I don't think it's in there. In the law, though.
I, I can get you a copy if you need one.
It is online, but it doesn't, didn't.
I just.
Yeah, yeah. And that's all I have on that. Shall we? Any, any you want to look at?
Yep, any other elected officials? Yes, ma'am.
Ms., Mr. Chair, maybe the deputy sheriff can come up and, there was some news about a deputy shooting a dog. Maybe you can just kind of clue us in on that.
Commissioners, Mr. Toretino, I wasn't there. I, I did visit with our sheriff about that, and he regrets that it unfolded that way, and his hand was forced. Unfortunately, the news media's altered the clips a little bit. The time that the original vehicle pulled in to the time he pulls in, when they aired that footage, they shortened it so it appears as if he had pulled the vehicle over. But really, he was looking for the vehicle to call it in. He lost sight of it, and where the vehicle parked, there was a fence blocking it, and when he passed that fence, it was suddenly upon him. So he pulled in, and he had his phone out to place a call and saw the individual get out, and that's when he grabbed his pistol. But it's portrayed as if he came out with a pistol automatically. But yeah, it's a, it's a unique situation. I wish he was here to speak on it, and maybe at the next meeting, he will be.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, people are asking me, and I, I say I don't know anything, but I'll ask when I come to the meeting. So that would be good. That way, yeah, we get the facts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Comments, input from the general public? Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to the comments or input from the general public. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Linda Corwin. I live in Bloomfield. And just real quickly, I wanted to say that before the San Juan generating station is completely gone, I hope it's being documented very well. Looking forward to a museum display someday when there are no more coal-fired power plants. What I really wanted to say was that at the last meeting, Commissioner Toretino was talking about recycling, and someone, I'm glad I can't remember who, gave what I felt was kind of a flippant answer about, well, it's all about the money. We shouldn't look at recycling as being just about the money, and we shouldn't be sitting back waiting for somebody to come and say, I will give you a zillion bucks for this commodity. A few days after that meeting, as a matter of fact, I got my Discover magazine, and in it was an interesting article about a certain type of black fly that will love to eat food scraps. And they can be put in a compact building, their life cycle is about two weeks long, and you feed them the food scraps, and their manure can be fertilizer. When the adult flies die, they can be sold as animal feed. So there's a job creator and an income producer, which could be very compactly put out at the waste site or anywhere, really. So that just dropped in my lap, and I'm thinking if things like that can just, you know, drop in my lap, what could you find if you actually went out and looked? We shouldn't be despoiling our land and our air and our water just because the garbage is put, you know, over the hill where you can't see it, so you don't think about it. That's wrong. We need to be thinking about it and thinking about our future generations and taking care to recycle these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? All right. Need a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into closed section to discuss threatened or pending litigation in which the county is a participant, specifically the Navajo Nation redistricting lawsuit pursuant to Section 10-15-1 H7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. Take a five-minute break?
Yep.
Sure.
I knew that we go back into open session and we didn't discuss anything that wasn't stated on the agenda.
What else I need to say? I don't have my name.
Didn't discuss anything beyond pending litigation and abomination? I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Can you post? Your turn.